Let me, uh. Great, I'll start off with the remote script. This open meeting of the Select Board, Finance Committee, and Capcom meetings being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. Uh, I don't know if there's any public, um, participation in this, maybe, maybe there is.
Jason.
Yep.
Do you have a quorum?
Oh, I'm just, I'm just reading the script, so I haven't called to order yet. Um, I do not.
Neither do I.
Neither do we.
So maybe I don't have to read, should I read the script just in case? No?
Just in case, people will show up.
I'll just flip through it. And it's, um, from this meeting, the Select Board, Capcom, and FinCom are convening by video conference via Zoom webinar is posted on the town's website. Um, the public may join. Would you like me just to call, just to do the roll call for everybody here? Is that fine? Okay, I'll just, as I see it, Rick Sears, here, Chris Goackey. Here, Libby Gibson.
There.
Denise Cronell.
Yeah.
Maria Basheba.
Here.
Melissa Murphy.
Here.
Even Maury.
Here.
Obie.
Here.
Even Welch.
Here.
Richard Hossi. I think that's everybody who's here. Uh, there's, there's no attendees, right? Everybody's just gonna be participants today, is what it seems like.
Yeah, typically, provided you actually get a quorum for the Select Board. Um, this is meant to be a review by the Capital Program Committee of where we are with the capital.
Yep.
Project review process. And, um, I would hesitate to proceed too far down the road without a quorum.
Sure.
Um, I guess if people were comfortable with it, you could, the thing, uh, Capcom Chair could review articles, but no real, you know, certainly no deliberation and no discussion. And that kind of means not really any questions.
Okay.
Libby, uh, Jason, it looks like we have a quorum for Capcom now, so maybe I'll call our, uh, meeting to order. And then if FinCom does, and then I can just maybe go through our process, uh, refresh everyone's memory. Uh, some, just a quick update and go from there. Good?
Yeah, um, Stephen, just to clear up about the other boards and the open meeting law. Um, so if Capcom does have a quorum, you all could have discussion and questions. Um, and I, I guess the Select Board members and the FinCom members could do the same as long as they don't have discussion or deliberation.
Makes sense to me. Um, so I'll call this meeting the Capital Program Committee to order, and, uh, the order, I see you, uh, Jason Bridges.
Here.
All right, Christie, Kick'em.
Here.
Richard Hossi. I see you nodding, Richard. Honestly, I actually can't see your picture, but, um, and I'm in fear.
Here.
Thank you, Richard. Um, all right, so, uh, for those who are, who are here, uh, well, actually, is there a FinCom quorum? Yeah?
Yeah, there is now because Peter Schaefer's in the waiting room, so if Maria, if you can let him in, or Rick, whoever needs to let him in, then we'll have a quorum as well.
Great. See him there.
And Stephen, I'm here on Capcom too.
Oh, Jill, I'm sorry.
David. Jason.
So as soon as.
So, and George is looking.
Oh, Joanna, Joanna just joined as well, so I will call to order the Finance Committee meeting. Hi, Joanna. And we're still waiting for Peter to come in, Peter Schaefer.
I haven't. I don't see Peter in the waiting room.
That's what, well, he just sent me a text saying he was.
I'll email him.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Um, we're out of practice, I think, on Zoom, so, okay, but we're a quorum in any case now, so.
Okay, great.
Call FinCom to order, so you're over, back over to you, Mr. Welsh.
Thank you, Denise. Um, so in any event, glad you all could make it. Uh, we hope you had a chance to review the individual requests in the database and catch the monthly meetings at the Select Board, uh, the monthly updates at the Select Board, uh, meetings for the FinCom members. Uh, today, I'm just gonna go through with a quick update on Capcom's process and with a Q and A, and after that, we'll field questions on the requests themselves, if, um, to the extent there's, we can do that. Um, you know, obviously, our goal is to create, or at least help create, some clarity early in the recommendation cycle. Uh, on our process specifically, uh, we've completed department-level interviews and discussion, except for the DPW, uh, who are scheduled. Uh, Capcom members are also reviewing requests on their own, and that's to provide an independent, uh, ranking of each request. In the next few weeks, we'll examine each ranking, we'll do that in a group setting, and that'll lead to, uh, prioritization of the requests in list form. Uh, you all, uh, you all will receive a copy in mid-December. Uh, afterward, Capcom will tackle tasks that inform our final report, which will include to review preliminary funding sources and in due time finalize the funding sources, tax rate, user fee impacts, and the like. Um, on the requests themselves, uh, the report, there was a report attached to the meeting invite, which includes the department head proposed costs, prior years' funding, if any applicable, and currently anticipated out-year expenses. Uh, in some instances, the expense listed is actually a placeholder as opposed to a hard number, uh, to the extent that, you know, 10 years hence, we can actually have a hard number at all. Uh, there are some requests that have not yet been listed. Uh, those are DPW vehicles, uh, order magnitudes in the $400,000 range. I believe there's eight or so of them, a variety, a variety of types, uh, that will be supplemented into our work process and be included in our update in December. Uh, we will also, to the extent any come up, uh, review Select Board and citizen capital requests. Uh, let's, yeah, go ahead.
Can I call Select Board meeting to order? Matt's here now.
Oh, please.
Okay, I'll call the Select Board meeting to order. Uh, Melissa Murphy, are you here? And.
Yes.
Matt Fee.
Yep, I'm here.
I'm here, okay. Thanks, Stephen.
Yeah, sure. Uh, so currently, there are 74 requests, and they total slightly more than $96 million. And, um, at this point, I would open the floor, uh, to questions on process, and then, uh, if, to the extent, and then we'll go to, uh, specific requests. Anyone? Okay, so on, uh, specific requests, Capcom will primarily stick to process-related answers, and, um, we'll ask Rick, uh, to field anything on merits or, uh, particular details. So, um, any particular requests or out here comments or questions? This is gonna be the shortest meeting on record, thank you so much.
Somebody wants to show the presentation?
I can, you, uh.
Just might be helpful.
Stephen, is this, is this the one you would prefer to reference or not? This is all the detail. Um, that or the, uh, the update. I mean, I, I anticipate that everyone's had a chance to review the details, and, um, unless there were questions, we wouldn't be doing a line item review.
Yeah, Rick, you may wanna use the PowerPoint.
All right, so the, so.
So while Rick's pulling that up, Stephen, I actually, I'm gonna say Mr. Welsh, keep saying Mr. Welsh, so Stephen Maury doesn't think I'm talking to him. Um, the.
He can be Mr. Maury, I can be Steve.
The, of all the requests that you got through this year, uh, which are the ones that Capcom has spent the most time on? And of those, why?
Uh, I wouldn't say that there's a particular request that we pulled out, or a category of requests that we pulled out and, uh, kind of spent more time on than others. They all receive, you know, relatively similar amount of review. Um, part of that is that we're not getting, uh, at this point, uh, new, many new requests that involve details we're not already aware of, either due to the fact that it was a extension of a previous request, either through phase, uh, phased rollout, or as a supplemental. Um, and then there are some that we do get into that are more of interest, uh, such as the, uh, individual members' interest, like coastal resiliency, quite a bit of discussion there. But more on a informational basis as opposed to dollars and cents.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Um, so, uh, this is, this is this, this update is the same update that Select Board already received on September 22nd, which is the way we did this last year. We provided the previous update plus, plus the PDF spreadsheet, so, uh, there are some changes to it. I don't, from the Select Board perspective, you've already been through this, so somebody will have to tell me what you want me to do, or Stephen, do you want to do with this, or? Yeah, sure, uh, Rick and Libby or Jason, feel free, obviously, to jump in. You know, I, I just have looked at this meeting, and the, the reason it was set up, uh, and how we used it last year is if after having gone through individual requests in the database, uh, FinCom or Select Board members, obviously who aren't our liaisons, have particular questions or comments, or, you know, they wanted to get a better read on something, or maybe volunteer information we didn't, for some reason, have, or they wanted to share. That was really the purpose of the meeting. It was about, uh, having that discussion, and, um, I think it's a testament to the level of detail in the database that a lot of questions, uh, and I know this happens in our FinCom or our Capcom meetings. It's been a long time since I sat on the FinCom. Um, the, the level of detail in the database really informs us, and there are significantly fewer questions than in years past, prior to using it. Um, so if, if there's questions, I think we're here to answer, answer them. And if there aren't many, uh, I'll, uh, credit the database and the, uh, information that Department Heads, uh, have provided, and Rick has done such a great job putting together in a, in a, uh, readable format.
Sure, I think Matt had his hand up.
I'm sorry, Jason?
Yeah, it's, it's Matt.
Oh, Matt.
So you, you've mentioned, uh, coastal resiliency, and they've, you know, they've met with you, and, you know, and we understand there's a couple things that are, you know, are, are there, but there are MVP grants, it's like a 25%, we have to give 25%, they give 75% that we may wanna be working on sooner rather than later. We discussed those at Coastal Resiliency today. And so, and I'm not sure the deep, you know, we haven't got to the details, that'll happen in sort of January time, I think, December or January. But I just wanted to put that on the radar, and I think we wanna make sure that the things that need to be done soon and that, get done soon, that's, so. And I, I'm not sure they're reflected, I know you've got some stuff in there for sand, uh, you know, sand transport, et cetera, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, thanks, and, so we, I'm, I presume that as, um, you, as you mentioned, you just met today on that, that we'll get an update, uh, from our liaison, uh, to that group, and also through Rick, anything that has a dollars and cents number. Um, we can receive updates from Natural Resources. I'll just mention on the coastal resiliency, one of the things that has changed, uh, that is, uh, reflected in the report you have, is that the Parks and Recs is going, the, we're, the town is shifting to, uh, reviewing, funding for soft costs to review in part, uh, any of the, uh, Parks and Rec future projects coinciding and aligning with coastal resiliency initiatives, if I understood, uh, previous discussions with Rick and others. Um, so that, I guess my point is, is there is a sensitivity, um, and a focus on not only having, uh, the coastal resiliency awareness, but integrating it into capital requests. Joanne?
And then, I'm sorry, Christie Kick'em, I, I missed you. No problem.
Hi, um, yes, one of the things, well, I'm also on the CRAC committee along with Matt, and we did talk today, and our understanding is that the sediment transport study is part of the, as part of the capital crash request from the Natural Resources Department, but that it also needs to potentially be accompanied by a budget study, a sediment budget study. And so I, what I don't understand, um, is one, is that included in the Capcom request for this year? I think that's one question. And the other question that I have is, and I, uh, is, are you guys evaluating each of the cap requests through the lens of coastal resiliency? Meaning that, in terms of the report, it's indicated 40 projects in three different priority areas that really significantly impact the island, and, um, I'd like to have some reassurance that you guys are familiar with all that when you're making these evaluations.
Thanks, Joanne, Joanna. So, we rely on the professionals who are the Department Heads to provide that information to us. Um, unfortunately, just given the sheer numbers and the level of detail associated with each request, it'd be impossible to say, yes, we know every aspect of every request. Um, so what happens is we do an interview and discussion, uh, in addition to having the detailed information provided in the database. And, um, and specifically to your point of, uh, integrating coastal resiliency into the various requests. Um, certainly with Jeff, we, Jeff Carlson and his presentation, that's happening. And then we anticipate that that's happening with respect to other requests that might overlap. Um, we do ask those questions, um, but, um, I just wanna be clear that knowing the ins and outs of the coastal resiliency plan in such detail is something we have to relay, uh, rely on individual members who are liaisons, uh, through the Select Board or through FinCom, who can, uh, or through our own member, uh, Christie Kick'em. I believe Christie is on coastal resiliency. Um, and in that way, is, as in with most committees, boards, and commissions, the information flows back through and becomes a, a discussion point, uh, to the extent it's relevant. Um, the, uh, budget for sand, I don't recall whether specifically that's included or not. We did spend quite a bit of time with Jeff discussing this particular, the, uh, nutrient flow investigation, uh, the watershed, the harbor watershed, uh, project request, uh, but perhaps Rick could address that. Yeah, I, oh, yeah, thank you, Stephen. Uh, the, the sediment transport and dredge plan, uh, is to implement a project to, I'm just reading this, to, to map the near-shore sand instead of the transport, to develop a sand budget. So, uh, hopefully, and then, and, um, well, does that answer your question? I mean, the answer is yes, is to develop a sand budget model. Okay. Thank you, Joanna, and thanks, Rick. Christie Kick'em?
Uh, Steve, just, uh, two items. Um, going back to Denise's question about, um, items that we've discussed in length, um, and that have taken up some of our time. I was just gonna mention that, um, that's still probably an answer we can get to you. Uh, there's still a lot of vetting of, of a lot of these, uh, items as far as our final report. Um, and I'm sure at that point, uh, you'll have a good idea which ones, uh, the committee struggled over. Um, and then I was gonna mention to Joanna, if I could, Steve, uh, having been on the Capital Committee for quite some time, coastal resiliency has just kind of come into the, into the light for us. And so I think, um, no question, as we delve into that, uh, document more, uh, that a lot of our decisions will, uh, follow, uh, some of the guidelines that, uh, are set forth in that report. Um, so I'm thinking that, for the most part, we will review that report, and it will have a factor, or a factor in on, uh, some of our decision-making as we go forward. It's, 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 for me, it's very new to us, and so we're just absorbing it as it is a tremendous amount of information. Uh, so I just wanted to add that.
Uh, thank. Thanks, Christie. Uh, Jill, and then Joanna.
I just wanna add for Joanna, that one of the criteria that we do have to look at is, is it part of the strategic plan? And if it's part of the strategic plan that the Select Board's approved, and that really does carry a lot of weight, I think, in how it's evaluated, so. Um, that's just an overall, you know, for me, anyway, for me, as I evaluate it, that's really important to me, so.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Joanna, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I mean, thank you, I appreciate both of those comments. I, it is a lot of information, and I think that one of the things that I've certainly been left with as a result of going through this process is how important any future spending that we do in the capital area, um, impacts the town and the projects that we're doing when it comes to coastal resiliency. Because the, the urgency and the locations of some of the zones that have been identified as high priority affects the entire town in a very, very significant way. I mean, I, I know, you know, Matt is also on the, uh, committee, and we have sat through many, many meetings over these past several months, and, um, it made me walk away with a increased sense of responsibility in how we spend any capital money, money on the town of Nantucket and any kind of improvement projects. So I appreciate that you're taking it seriously.
That's a good point. Joanna, that's a point well taken.
Yeah.
Peter?
Yes, the question, um, how, who is in charge of going to, to the government for funding? Especially with a trillion dollars being released and, and the president gonna be here Wednesday, uh, next week? So, is Jason gonna have dinner with him? Now, is there, is there an approach to government money at this point?
Uh, I, I'll just touch on that, uh, and then, uh, see if Rick wants to sit, comment, or Libby. Uh, that is a topic that's come up, and, um, you know, there are both state and federal programs. Uh, Matt mentioned MVP grants, um, there's a variety of them, and then, you know, I, a lot of which, many of which revolve around having a set plan, so having it voted and adopted by the executive body of the town, and so on and so forth. So, I anticipate that in due time, and that's not to suggest that it will be, uh, forever and a day, but, uh, when it's appropriate to be able to do so, those, those, uh, grants that are applicable will be researched and, uh, to the extent we can, and then pursued.
Is there timing on, on that at all? I mean, I'm sure some, everybody else wants the money as well. They're not holding it for Nantucket.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, this is not my area of expertise, but I have some expertise in different areas that are, that are transferable. Um, yes, there, you know, there probably are deadlines and timelines, but, uh, it more important than, perhaps more important than submitting for a grant is submitting for a grant that we can secure because we've been able to put together uh, an awardable, uh, bid on it, or a bid or proposal, so. Um, I think it's a great question, and I'm sure it's a goal that, of the, uh, town administrator, and I'm sure more so with Department Heads, or at least I would think so. But it would be premature to say X, Y, and Z grants are being, uh, submitted for, and the deadlines are, uh, one, two, and three. Um, but it, it is an important avenue of funding.
Thank you.
Okay, and then, Christie, one moment before you go, 'cause I, I wanted to do a follow-on on Joanna's question. I think, um, one of the important aspects of, and, uh, back to Denise's, is in terms of the review process, is once we complete our individual rankings, uh, what we're doing in the next few weeks after we meet with DPW is a discuss, a group discussion and a group ranking, and that's where we have a lot of deliberation, and we may, um, and often do seek additional information from the Department Heads. Um, and also through town admin, and, and then on the funding side with the Finance Department. The other is, excuse me, is the, um, just chatted some notes here. The, uh, the concept of the coastal resiliency, I think Jill makes a great point. Obviously, it needs to be adopted as just, as a strategic plan, which I presume it will be. Um, at least to great extent. And then what we've done at Cap, Capital Program with a ranking system is we've incorporated strategic plans in such a way as to change the culture or encourage investment in those types of things, so that our monies are being invested into long-term goals as opposed to only the emergency of the day, week, or year. Um, so we are looking at that, and I, I really appreciate the discussion on these points. Christie, did you have another comment? Christie Kick'em?
Uh, no, I was, I, I wasn't sure, uh, at the point, we were talking about coastal resiliency somewhat. I, I didn't know if Peter was referring to that or to capital, uh, requests. And I was just gonna, uh, add an example of, uh, the airport. Uh, they, we do get funding from the feds on certain projects, um, that are federally funded, uh, so, uh, usually the Department Head has a good idea whether it's enterprise fund or, uh, Department Head, uh, whether, uh, funding is available. But there are questions that come up as far as, uh, our discussions with the Department Heads.
Thanks, Christie. Uh, Matt? Your view, there you go.
Yeah, so I got it, there we go. No, I was gonna answer a couple of those questions. I think that, uh, the sooner we put our, you know, grants in, our applications in, the better off we are. There'll be fewer people we're competing with. Uh, it's why I brought up the MVP is doing the spring, and, uh, and there'll be, the sooner, if we can set aside some money for that, for what, you know, projects, if we, you guys can have an open mind, uh, so that when coastal resiliency looks at it, if there's anything, anything we can start sooner, that would be better than waiting a whole nother round. So, you know, that's number one. Uh, and then I would say, this is a key issue. You know, it, it's not, if you leave it to Department Heads, no offense to Department Heads, that, sometimes it happens and sometimes it doesn't. And so I think that, you know, this is gonna be a huge, uh, whole coastal resiliencees. You know, hopefully, that will be something we'll have to hire someone for, Vince will have to have help with, the town will have to have help, and we have to stay on it on a, you know, a regular basis. Uh, it's going to be so much money, and it's, you know, it's, you can't find anything that's more long-term and more important than this, and so I, I just, I think, you know, it has to rise to, to the right level. What I've seen, you know, over the last few years is the awareness is growing, but it hasn't really always been there. In some projects that are in the pipeline, it's very hard, once a project is sort of underway, to then say, oh, jeez, have you thought about this? Because people get vested, they're, they're invested in, you know, sort of the outcome they've already thought about, and the, the plans have already done. The previous investment is there, and so, you know, it's, it's, some of the, it's gonna take a little bit of time, and we're getting better at it, but it's gonna take some time to really include it everywhere.
Thanks, Matt, appreciate the insights on that from Select Board members. Um, other questions? I see your hand there, Jill, go ahead.
All right, just one more thing, I mean, one of the things that's challenging, this is my first year on this committee, so the detail is, you know, sometimes overwhelming, to be honest, but, you know, when we say we do or do not support, you know, getting a new ambulance this year versus next year, I mean, how, how is that supposed to tie into the work at CRAC? I guess I just wanted to, under, because we are talking about, there's a lot of detail in their requests, they're very specific, they're not always completely relevant, but if you think that they are, I want the Select Board to tell me that.
Uh, thanks, Jill, I just, quick follow on that before, if anyone were, were to respond. I think, you know, this is an area, uh, of tremendous expense, um, perhaps not unlike PFAS, but it's also not like PFAS, it's very broad. So, part of any strategic determinations by the Select Board, it will be very helpful for Capcom in reviewing, uh, projects that come before us, to have a better understanding of overall dollars and, um, uh, priorities specific to coastal resilience, so that we have a concept of, there's a, there's an intended bucket of this many dollars versus, um, weighing them against ambulances and so on and so forth. And that way, we're, we're weighing the coastal resiliency requests amongst and against one another. Um, obviously against the whole, but not against an ambulance, using that as an example. Uh, Denise?
I wonder, Stephen, if there's an opportunity to almost do a flow chart, to say, is this project coastal resiliency? Yes. Is, uh, or to say, is this project within the area immediately affected by coastal resiliency? In which case, yes, and therefore, maybe it's not wise to spend it. You know what I'm saying? So to kind of triage, um, maybe not for this cycle, but to think about, is there a way to see? Um, because there may be some projects you just don't, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna replace a sidewalk that's gonna be underwater 50 days of the year. So, you know, that's probably not a great example, but it's the one that came to the top of my head. So, maybe there's something, maybe there's a, maybe that's something coastal resiliency could come up with, um, in terms of a, here's the flow chart we could create that, to ask a series of questions about any spending, to make sure that whilst we can't spend only on coastal resiliency, we do need ambulances and firefighting equipment, et cetera. At the same time, we know that when we spend a dollar anywhere else, it is such a necessary dollar before we're underwater 50 days of the year. So, that was my thought that came up as everybody was discussing this.
Thanks, Denise. And probably how we would translate that into our operations. With respect to the database and otherwise, you know, for instance, a report could just be generated. Is we are, there are various categories like legal mandate or imminent threat. Life and safety. So there may be, this may be one of those instances where. The need is so great that we actually create another checkbox. And this one is coastal resiliency and it can be, you know, a request can be sorted on that. So I think there's a variety of ways of doing it. I think the flow chart is a good, you know, for me, from the Capcom position. It would be wonderful to have input from the coastal resiliency committee. Or whoever the designee is from town administration on that. We do work through town administration, so that would be the proper channel for us. So just like our group coastal resiliency took a lot, we, we put a lot of discussion into that one. Any other questions or thoughts on that or other topics at this point? Mary?
Thank you, Stephen. So I, I am chair of the coastal resilience advisory committee, just so everybody knows. But Matt is on the committee, Joanna is on the committee and, and since they were invited, I didn't want to speak in front of them. Environmental leadership is one of the strategic goals of the select board and that's why, you know. Pursuing the coastal resilience plan was a priority for them. But before we started that, we also created a recommendation which the select board adopted. Which is that the town should consider the effects of sea level rise in all of its deliberations and planning. So that there is that guiding principle right now. I appreciate very much hearing all the discussion and that it's top of mind for so many people. Thank you for, for that. The coastal resilience plan is a lot of information and I appreciate that it takes some time to get through. I want to bring up a slightly different topic and it is related in the sense that environmental sustainability. Is something that affects how much we're going to have to spend on coastal resiliency. But we also need to be looking at ways to reduce sea level riot rise, reduce global warming. Reduce the impacts of climate change. And just to pick on one in particular, when we're talking about vehicle purchases. Is that vehicle expected to last for ten years or is a vehicle replacement schedule already set out for the next five to ten years? Do we need to start thinking about whether those vehicles should be electric rather than gas powered? Same thing for heating plants, same thing for any use of fossil fuels. You know, those are questions that I'd like to bring to the capital committee as well. As individual spending on coastal resilience, but also spending so that we reduce the need for the resilience projects in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Thanks for joining us too. Other comments or questions? All right. Well, I think at this point, you know, obviously we are available if, if any do crop up comments or questions and they could be directed through the. Respective liaison. And, you know, we've still got a, quite a bit of work ahead of us. We'll be finishing up our, our interview and discussion with DPW on there. Three areas, which is typically facilities, general and transportation. And then setting about to get you all a list of our likely recommendations. Either up or down and then get, get on to our, the work involved to prep and complete our final report. So with that, oh, Joanna?
Sorry, I have one more question. And this is about the overall capital. Requests for this year and also just to follow up on anything that we voted through last year. I know this has come up before, so this may be more of a question for Libby. I'm, I'm wondering if there is a format or a report that we can have about the, the projects that were funded last year. And whether or not they've gotten started and the projects that you're putting forth to be funded this year. Whether, because one of the things I'm sensitive to right now is projects that we vote through that don't get started. Right? So I'm trying to look at if we, the request that you're making and you're pushing forward this year. What is the likelihood of them getting started in twenty, in, in the next year, right? Because they have to be funded through the vote. So it's a two-part question and probably it could be more for Libby.
As far as projects that were previously, oh, Jason, were you gonna?
Go ahead, Libby. I'll, I'll wait.
I was just going to say, projects that have been previously approved already are in various stages of starting, not starting in a queue. I, I mean, I don't know them off the top of my head. I'm sure we can get you a report on them. And as far as readiness to implement projects that we're putting forward, that is going to depend on our staffing resources.
I know. Okay, thank you.
Joanna, I, I think my, my four years in my first year on Capcom, that question came up a little bit, but I can say the last. These last two, two years, it's almost every. Every single project that has to be implemented. It's not just a truck to purchase or something. That question comes up. And I remember last round, Stephen, we didn't put some things through because we didn't feel. That all of that could be done in that, that fiscal year. So it is a continuing conversation at Capcom. I think a, a report over the last five years of what hasn't started yet might give us some, some insight. Future, but it is something talked about on a, on a weekly basis.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. I appreciate that. Christie?
Yeah, just to add to Jason's point, Joanna, there's oftentimes also a fund set up for like, say, a phased account, phased. Work, for example, I think it was sidewalks one year that didn't get done. And the money from the previous year was still in there without any spent. And so we do, we do ask those questions and we have held back. A few requests in the past because of that, because all you're doing is creating a, a fund that was really not set up to. You know, have a huge balance, but to fund annual work.
Thank you.
Okay, and then Joanna, just on your other, the other part of your question. We actually do have a meeting where we review, I'm sure I came up, it was quite a mouthful. Capital request status, project report or something of that nature where we take a look at. What was funded, the, what was authorized the prior year, where it is in terms of funding and progress and then any outstanding projects. So as we develop and delve into that more in the future, you know, perhaps a copy of that would just. Programmatically be issued to the FinCom. All right. I was almost ready to say goodbye last time, but I'm certainly glad to answer questions or see if we can share other information. So if there's more. No?
I think the process has gotten so much better for, for in terms of the collaboration between FinCom and Capcom and obviously Select Board. And that the database is just so helpful. So, you know, full marks to everyone. I know it's, it's, it's a lot of work and it's a lot of effort for the. Department heads to put everything in and Rick, I'm sure you might have to chase them a little bit. I'm just imagining that might be true. And Libby and, you know, to all your staff and everyone who has to work on this, it does. Better data is better discussion. So thank you to all of you for the improvements. It's, it's really, it's really. Extremely helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. We appreciate the feedback and, and agree with all of what you said. With that, I think I would ask Denise if you want to take a motion to adjourn and then I'll close out the meeting after Jason.
Okay, all right then. I, can I have a motion to adjourn the finance committee meeting, please?
Move.
A second. Thank you. By roll call, George. Stephen.
Hi.
Jill.
Hi.
Joanna.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi.
Denise, I, the FinCom meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Stephen. Back to you.
Thank you. And Jason?
Promotion?
Motion.
Second.
All those are favored to adjourn by roll call. Melissa? Matt?
Hi.
Jason, I. We are adjourned.
Hi, guys.
Great, thanks. And Capcom will take a motion to ratify the opening of the meeting and to close.
Don't move.
Richard, got you. Peter, Richard on your motion.
Hi.
All right, Jason?
Hi.
And Christie Kickem?
Hi.
And Peter Kaiser?
Hi.
And Jill?
Hi.
Great, and I'm an I. Thanks again, everybody.
Thanks.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.